I look forward to another good meeting. Our first thing will be our City Council briefing, Historic House Foundation Strategic Plan, and it's my pleasure to introduce Bob Jones. Yeah, so look around here, Bob used to sit in this chair. Clancy used to sit in this chair. Clancy was about ready to sit in before I came out. I said he could have it.
He's a lot more comfortable to sit in that one.
And Louis is always right here. He's been there. He should be out every day.
There from the beginning.
But it's so good to have you here, Bob.
Well, I'm delighted to be here and speak on behalf of the Historic Homes Foundation of Virginia Beach, of which I am the president and accompanied by the vice president, former Clancy, former mayor Clancy Hall.
You're close to the ball.
Right. And we have some other members of the foundation board here, too, I would like to just mention. First of all, Steve Mansfield in the corner, who is the author of this treasury of book of Virginia Beach. This is the place to turn to if you really want to know where we've been and what's happened. A couple of other people, Jim Burdal, who was in development at Virginia Wesleyan, so we need him on the board definitely. Sandy Craig is here from the board, she's a longtime docent, particularly at the Francis Land House. Joanne Moore is here. Lynn Clements, who's the director of Department of Museums. I hope I haven't lost the neuron along the time.
We welcome everybody, glad everyone here.
That's right. And Cynthia Spanolos, who is the executive director and working very closely with the committee, and then Ann Moore, who is the curator for the city.
Absolutely.
Okay. So I'd like to bring up to you the purpose and mission of our corporation, and I guess the place to begin is the beginning, which couldn't mean you're in here for a long time. But what you have in front of you should be this handout, which actually has three parts to it. One is our strategic plan, which gives the vision and what we're about, our strategies for going forward with the development of public interest in the historic homes. Then there's, we've held a number of stakeholder meetings to invite the public from various sections of the city to meet down at the convention center, where we had lots of discussions, broke into groups, and got feedback from the public as to where they thought Historic Homes Foundation ought to be going. So you have that data there. And then the last part, which has its own numbering system, the strategic plan for the Department of Museums, and that's a very worthwhile, very well-thought-out piece of work, and it's worth everybody's review. But I can't take you all the way back to the beginning because Cynthia Spanolos has prepared a script. So I have to go by the script to keep in a reasonable timeframe. It's a pleasure for me representing the board and the other board members here to have an opportunity to bring you up to date with what is going on in our area of concern for the Historic Homes Foundation. Today is our first opportunity really to appear before you all and give you an idea of where we're going and what we want to do. Over the past few years, we've met regularly to develop a comprehensive document, which you have received at your seat. In going into detail, I just want to highlight a few of the sections and what we're up to. As I mentioned, we began by holding stakeholder meetings and also had a meeting for the public at large to come and talk to us about their interests and concerns about development of historic homes. Then on page three and also in your handout, I think it looks like, it's got a picture on in front of this. This document is, you should have a copy of that, and it sets forth what our vision is. "The Virginia Beach Historic Homes and Properties are cultural assets that are be valued and supported by the community. As trustees, we are committed to historic architecture, authentic collections, inspiring landscapes, stimulating program experience for all audiences, and to maintain the highest levels of professional and national accreditation." The goals that we have set are three. I don't know if I can find where Cynthia has pinned those. Well, the first one is funding. We don't think we can move anywhere if we don't get funding. And the first one is to increase the financial foundation for the foundation, which is a 501(c)(3) corporation, so that we are entitled to receive tax-deductible gifts from the public. Then we want to increase the engagement of people around the city in the historic homes and get more involvement of people in the activities and cultural phenomenons that we want to have put on there. And then thirdly is to build public awareness and to organize and clear consensus communication about what's going on in our city, so that we develop a sense of the importance of our background and where we came from. As you're going forward, it's good to have some sort of reference point from which you can look back and see where we're going and what we have done and how we've become this great city. So nineteen, in 2016 and 17, we have, we're raising, so far we have already raised $50,000 and are happy to announce our first event, which we're sponsoring, which is the Revolutionary War Encampment out of the Thurgood House on November 14th to 15th. Everybody's invited to come out there, and it'd be an interesting opportunity to see people dressed up as colonial soldiers and remind us of what they have done for establishing the country. Let's see, media VA. This was not as well rehearsed as we should have. Well, moving on to the next one. This is, one of the things we want to do is reinterpret a part of our historic homes, and this in particular in reference to the Francis Land House. And so what is going to happen is we will have a reenactment of how this house was back in the early '40s at the beginning of the Second World War, and bring in lots of the artifacts of that time and let people share in what was going on in our city in that period of time. And of course, one of the interesting things was what is now called wayside furniture. Well, it was at one time a prisoner war camp for the German prisoners and who worked the fields for the farmers who were drafted and gone off to war. So we hope that, we think that our first initial response to this idea has been very strong, and we will be, hopefully, you'll be hearing more about that. We want to finally go on in fundraising and increasing the educational programs of the city. We hope to be working with WHRO in developing some video that would be available to schools and also to be put on our Channel 15 to display, again, the value of our important homes. And the main point for what we're going to be doing in 2016, 2017 is developing, implementing strategies for how to expect, how to achieve our goals, so that we now have the goals out there, we have a sense of a mission of what we were trying to do on behalf of the city, and now we need to get concrete in terms of implementing all these strategies that are available to enhance the importance of the homes in Virginia Beach. So invite you to examine the strategic plan that we've put together and be glad to accept any kind of input that the City Council can give us in regards to the direction that you'd like for us to be taking or emphasis that you'd like to see us fulfill. We're certainly open to your suggestions, and we certainly would be glad to have those and also take the opportunity right now to answer any questions that you might have in regard to the work of the foundation.
Thank you for the presentation. Any questions or comments from council members, please? You did such good, oh, Barbara.
I don't have a question, but can I make a history comment?
Yes, ma'am. The teacher comes out in her again. Come on.
Something else about history that occurred, that doesn't have to do with the houses, but it was, I think, three years ago that I brought in the Washington Rochambeau Trail brochures, and they let you know that the National Park Service was wanting to include Princess Anne County, Virginia Beach on that trail with a marker, and it finally got put in this summer. It's at Pleasure House Point, and it explains the fact that, you know, we, I see, you know, we are talking about the beginning or one of the early events in the war, of course, before the war actually was started at Camps Landing, but we were also very instrumental in the ending of the war with all of the things that happened with De Gost keeping his ships in the bay and blockading the Chesapeake so that Cornwallis couldn't escape. And of course, yesterday, October 19th, was the anniversary of the surrender of Cornwallis, which probably would not have happened had those ships not been here still in the Chesapeake. And now all that is explained on this marker, and I guess we're officially on the trail now and ought to be showing up in those brochures. So I hope that this is something that we will make sure that folks appreciate about our history, and now it's official.
Thank you very much. Amelia?
Just want to say we're real excited about the reenactment, and they plan to have period music as well, and I think it's something you wouldn't want to miss. So we hope we get many council people and others to come out for them.
Super.
Of course, in Camps Landing.
Right. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Bob, thank you and your whole group for coming down this afternoon. We appreciate it so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great to see you all. Okay, we'll now move on to the City Manager's Briefing, the Bio Initiative. Warren Harris. Can I got your?
I'm not going to make it today.
Thank you. And all the, I got an explanation of the thing, of the thing you asked for.
I hope so. I hope so.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Former, glad to have you.
Glad you all for allowing us to come before you this afternoon. As we have indicated earlier in the previous presentations, we want to come to you on a regular basis, at least on a quarterly basis, bring you up to speed on the Bio Initiative. Of course, we've been very pleased and excited about the support that our initiative is gaining throughout the region, if not throughout the Commonwealth, and of course, want to, once again, congratulate council for the leadership that you have shown in terms of investing in this important target industry sector, which we think we have some capacity to see some real strong outcomes. So the agenda today is really to give you an update on some of the efforts we have gone with getting to brand our initiative. I want to share with you a little bit about our new website, talk about some active projects. Even though we've just been in this initiative since July with funding, I'm happy to report there are some very active projects in the market that are looking at the city for placing their activities. We have had the opportunity to during this period to do what we call, you know, testing some best practices in the marketplace, share with you a little bit about our results of that. Going to ask you to consider, and later in the presentation, the designated area that we've identified for the Bio Park to consider at one of your later meetings this year, to assign that to the Development Authority, and there's some reasons for that. I think you'll be impressed by what's going on. Talk a bit about what's going on on the state level. There was a major webinar today that we listened in on to get a gleam from where the state is going with some of their directions and investments in this regard, and come back at the end with some next steps and questions. Again, as well as we've talked about well in the past, this initiative is not being done in an isolated format. We have engaged some of the principal leaders within our market, within our region, both on the industry and academic side, to guide and frame this agenda for us and with us. Again, we see it as an opportunity that stretches from Richmond to the oceanfront in terms of the assets that are in play for us to capitalize on and for some of the major entities that are engaged in the process, and we've been very pleased with their involvement. Again, the outcome from the market assessment that we did and conducted back in the spring through Firm Facility Logics identified for us, you know, four key areas in which we have strong capacity and strength in, and they're listed there. Diabetes, of course, the program that's at the Straylitz Center, Jerry Nadler, the principal researcher there, has given us really a strong leg up to really to leverage that area of science and research for us. Cardiovascular disease, it's well documented that Centerra has been one of the top medical facilities in the country with regard to its work centered around cardiovascular disease. Neuroscience, we think there's certainly be, with some of the work that's being done here within the region, we have a placeholder there. And of course, brain injury is also a little bit synonymous with wounded warrior, but we think that we can step into that space and gain some traction there. One of the unique things we started looking at, and as you all well know, we've designated the Princess Anne Commons Corridor as our bio healthcare corridor. Look at some of the existing and immediate assets that we have in the area, looking at just those functions that are in blue. For example, everything from the Advanced Technology Center, you know, to include LifeNet and CHKD. Look at those functions that are in green in terms of recreational functions, and then the things that are in red, those functions that are in red have occurred since we made this announcement about us moving into this space with regard to getting engaged in the biosciences. You know, everything from, even though the Health Professions Building was there, you're going to hear in the presentation, a component of that building that they're going to make available to us. The expansion and growth that's going on at Centerra Hospital, we'll share with you a little bit that's going on there. The medical facilities operation there, the CHKD sports medical facility, and the potential for us to establish a future business park. We spent a little time, you know, understanding that we want to carry and create our own designated brand, to create one for our initiative. We're happy to roll out the Virginia Beach Bio, a wave of innovation, brand that will sort of market and lead our effort in terms of what this effort is all about from a market and branding standpoint. See a couple of the other branded organizations there. The other piece that we should be very near in rolling out, at least our hopes by the end of the month, is a very comprehensive website. I'm going to share with you just some snapshots of some of the pages that are in the website, but this is one that we can specifically direct individuals, whether they're in the research, whether they have some interest in research, or some application of commercialization as it relates to the bio industry here in rich Virginia Beach, can use this portal with our website to gain information for us to have a large degree of communication. Broadband technology, as Councilman Davenport has been advocating, plays a major role here for us, as well as some of the industries that we and businesses that we look to attract. But we think that, you know, just this portal that the website will create and establish for us will allow us to communicate in a way in which the research community would like to, at least from an initial standpoint, you know, the attributes and amenities here within Virginia, Virginia Beach and the Hampton Roads community. The Bio Best Practices, as I mentioned, we took a bit of a time to really try to do a little dive into what are some benchmarks in the marketplace that we can look to, to help us and assist us in establishing our program. And we've done a fairly extensive research, at least in our opinion, to look at some of these best practices that are going on in other localities and how they're looking to attract bio medical companies. Some that are listed there really are some leading facilities in areas within the country. One of the common threads that we found is that there's often a college campus or a college application associated with the effort. And to that end, you know, we were very fortunate and happy to announce that, you know, we have a significant partner with Tywhar Community College, which is now in a position to allow us to utilize space in their Regional Health Profession Center. We've been debating or having an internal debate within this process throughout about sort of the chicken or the egg kind of thing, you know, what do you do? Do you go after the research and try to attract the research and then identify a location or a space in which that research can occupy? Or do you step out early in the marketplace and announce the facility that can handle that research? Well, we've gotten very fortunate, again, because of some of the assets that are in the marketplace to leverage what's there at Tywhar Community College, where they will be providing for us, allowing us to use and to create what we're calling an accelerator in space available in their Health Professions Building, where it can be the wet lab space, the startup space, the space in which the researcher can lease at a very nominal rate to start and expand the research and hopefully take that research then to the next level. We're working on and finalizing the operational agreements and the lease arrangements with the, with Tywhar Community College, and we're very pleased that there will be a significant partner with us. This gives you an idea of the floor, the floor plan for the accelerator. It's a full floor, second floor of that building that they've made available to us at no cost, that we can then assign or lease it to and make it a tool to attract some of that research here into Virginia Beach to advance and to accelerate hopefully into, you know, some form of commercialization. Again, one of the principles and underlying activities that we see behind this effort is to make sure at some point that this research that's conducted in the city or in the region has potentially become some commercial operation for business enterprise and job creation and so forth. So real exciting and very fortunate that that's come forward for our use and our benefit. Some of the active activities that are in projects that have been going on since, again, we've announced, we've had, we had the good fortune about a month, earlier this month, quite frankly, to share in news that came out of the Centerra Princess Anne Hospital of their expansion of their emergency department and their growth in servicing the, in their pediatric emergency track, which is now open, a state-of-the-art dedicated expansion in space within the hospital that's going to be and has been, you know, a major asset for families and children that are needing medical attention here in the city. They also have given us some opportunities in their medical office buildings for potential expansion and potential utilization of space in their building, as well as talking to us about some research and technology and some other biomedical healthcare services that they're looking to attract as a part of their portfolio of assets on their campus. And they gave us a full, and given us a full overview of what's going on there. We've been on the road with our initiative, of course, making sure that we get the, you know, the word out about the interest and capacity of what's occurring and available here in Virginia Beach. Attended one of the major biomedical healthcare shows in the world, Bio International. Happy to report out of that conference, we're able to identify a couple of active projects that we've had an opportunity to invite to the area, see the market, and in current negotiations and conversation with them about the opportunity of moving their research here to Virginia Beach. One in particular out of Wisconsin was extremely impressed, not only with the market, but the opportunity to partner with a LifeNet. Again, I can't oversell or, or, or sell the underlying, you know, benefits that are here with some of the existing assets. And for them, the idea of being adjacent to that regenerative institute that's there was certainly a leverage point and opportunity for us to attract them, to look at Virginia Beach in a way I think that will be very successful in. We've also, again, going back to that chicken or the egg, been able to interest private investment. There's a developer out of Atlanta that has been in the marketplace that's interested in building a facility here for us. We're looking at somewhere in a neighborhood of 20,000 to 30,000 square feet. Again, it will be the host, a host facility where we can utilize as an accelerator once again for attraction of research activities and other business-related functions, and we're in existing current conversations with them.
One thing to highlight here, he's done this in other parts of the country.
He has, and...
It's like the first time he's come to the rodeo.
And comes with a level of expertise, again, to the mayor's point, that certainly we would benefit from if we're fortunate to lock down that opportunity. And then there's, you know, although, you know, the medical and the biomedical sector is one in which you would commonly may think of just in research, but there are also some medical device company. These are obviously a manufacturer of a medical device opportunity that could also find ourselves having the good fortune of attracting. So this takes us to the Bio Park. You all have been briefed and seen this before. This is a concept, a rendering of the 155 acres of the well over 1,500 acres that make up the Princess Anne Commons area that we would like for the City Council to consider designating or assigning to the Development Authority so we can begin a process of putting in the necessary infrastructure and putting together, and putting together the necessary opportunities from these inquiries that we're getting today with regard to where we would host some of this interest in terms of a location within the city. The park, although 155 acres, through this concept design, it is in a position to host well over, you know, a million square feet of Class A, you know, office and wet lab space. So we think we would be well-served here for some time by having a designated area, a park such as this. As I mentioned earlier, we have been approached by a developer who wants to be a part of our initiative. This is a developer out of Atlanta that would want to come in and help leverage our initiative by building a 30, a 20,000 to 30,000 square foot building. They're in the process of doing their due diligence now. There is some interest, I think he's going to find, I think there are a couple of instances, or at least one instance, where there's an existing company that could very well take almost two-thirds of this space right off the bat. So very encouraged by that. The balance of that space, of course, would be, you know, the opportunity for us to attract some of this new investment that's critical for us in terms of research capacity utilizing that wet lab space for their needs. And if we're, again, very fortunate, this, I think this really is the trajectory that we would need to move our initiative even further. So on that score, it really is today a recommendation from staff to the council to transfer the 155 acres to the Development Authority. We'll go through the appropriate process to bring that forward to you with a resolution with your concurrence today at your December meeting. But... But I think it's the right opportunity, the right time, and it's a situation where we can certainly, you know, start negotiating a situation where we can lock down this, this development opportunity. Coming up, in terms of some next steps on, looking at the calendar going forward, again, later this month, we're looking to, to launch the, the website. We'll certainly get that information out. I think you'll be, once again, very impressed with the, that as a portal, again, to, to be a tool for us to engage the city into the bios, health sciences. One of the things that we're, we're, we're looking, as we look at our EDIP program and looking at creating, whether it's going to be a royalty program or potentially a loan program to help leverage and, and help attract some of this research, we're looking to create a bio subcommittee, a subcommittee of technical experts that when they hear that, that pitch made by the researcher or by the entity, they, they are better prepared than maybe we are to advise us as to whether or not that's a, a project or type of research that's worthy of, of an investment or a royalty payment that will, will, will seek to, to attract them here to, again, grow our, our footprint in this market. And again, November, through the development authority, then ultimately to, to here to council, a request for the transfer of the property to the development authority. December, this is when we plan to update our EDIP program to reflect some of these recommendations and suggestions on how we can leverage that as a opportunity to attract research here. We'll, we're going to create a, a video, if you will, about the bio opportunity here in Virginia Beach and suggest if, if you agree of that, of when that formal transfer could, could occur to the development authority. Looking ahead even further, again, as I said, we'd like to make this a quarterly presentation to give you a sense of where things are, knowing that you made a sizable investment in this initiative to keep you briefed as, as, as often as much as we can. In early 2016, there's certainly going to be legislation and a proposal by the governor. We've been in contact with his office on a, on a regular basis. His office has been in contact with us on a regular basis to talk about the Commonwealth as a whole becoming more aggressive in this, in this sector. And we're, we're anticipating that through that, there'll probably, no doubt, be a funding request in his budget to, to advance Virginia in a way in which it hasn't been in the past with regard to being actively involved in the biosciences. We're going to look in that first quarter probably in a position, if we're fortunate, and I think we will be, of looking at a site plan review of that 30, 20,000 to 30,000 square foot building in the Business Park. So we'll be taking them through the process of review for that. As you know, in the first quarter, the General Assembly will be in, in act, in action. We're going to be monitoring and tracking the Veterans Care Facility opportunity that we're, we're, we're looking to and very, looking forward to having funded as a result of the property that you've designated here in the city for that opportunity. And there are some, some specific bio-oriented trips that, that we have involved. Virginia Bio is the parent entity that's overseeing the state operations. Of course, we are, we've been intimately involved in their work as, as they have been involved in some of the work that we're doing. And we'll, we'll no doubt, we'll look to see what their strategies are going forward with regard to how the state will advance the agenda here for us all. Recent events, just, this past summer, major event occurred here where the Virginia Bio Board of Directors held their, their board of, board meeting here at LifeNet, actually. We attended the Bio Ag Conference out in Danville. LifeNet's conducted a recent symposium here in Virginia Beach, brought in a number of researchers to come in the market and held that here at the beach as well. So, just wanted to give you that as a, as a, as a quarterly update on the activities around our biosciences initiative and stand ready for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Do want to recognize David Couch and Steve Harrison, the, the principals behind the effort that are out there every day, you know, hustling this agenda for us.
Yeah, and I want to thank, we all want to thank you for doing what you're doing, doing a great job. John or-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question, this might be to you, Mr. Swor, where are we with the Veteran Care Center? When are they going to make a decision as to-
Uh, it's, it'll probably be late spring of next year.
Oh, it'll be that long?
Yeah, yeah, it'll be a part of the General Assembly process, they-
Oh, they'll go, they'll go to the General-
Yeah, so we would imagine after this, end of the session in March.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Barbara and John?
Uh, will there be a, a plan for this 155 acres with certain design principles and so forth that we know we will be getting before we convey this property?
Yeah, absolutely. We are going to apply the same Princess Anne architectural guidelines to the park as we've done in the previous projects in the area. So that, the design guidelines you see at Centerra will be reflected, and LifeNet will be reflected in the Business Park as well. So we're going to use those same architectural guidelines. Yes, yes, ma'am.
You'll, you'll be proud, I'll promise.
They're, they're, we may be looking for a little bit of verticality. I mean, we're trying to, you know, and that, I don't want to use the word density because there's open space involved in the ITA, but we're going to look to, to maximize that, that space with, with some vertical development.
I'm, I'm really concerned about, you know, the transportation system-
Sure.
-in that area.
Yeah.
And I know that we're supposed to be getting some information soon, and I, I think that's going to be really critical and how that comes with our prioritizing and so forth.
John, then Amelia?
Couple observations. One, I hope when you come back, you can maybe give us some trends about what's the concentration areas in the last, say, three years of the National Institute of Health and other governmental agencies that are granting grants? Because that's on the leading edge of where the future market is, not where the legacy market is, and that's where these young startup companies are going to be because they, they're not going to try to compete on legacy business. There's no money and that, can't raise capital for that, number one. Secondly, I'd like, you know, you've probably been at the Virginia Tech and seen that tremendous amount of lab space they have built. And, and I think I'd like to have some critique about, you know, I saw a lot of the stuff at TC was office space, but that really wasn't lab space. It's lab space where intellectual product is created. So I hope we have a better understanding of the, of the lab space we're going to create. If you look today, if you read Wall Street Journal or you read any of these magazines talking about investing, you know, biologics is the big issue, even more than immunology. Immune, immune systems is looking at biologics as whether big research money is being placed by pharmaceuticals. So clearly, that's got to, I'd like to understand how biologics fits into the areas we pick, which is heart, diabetics. And lastly, I don't know any place in the country, San Diego included, which is one of the benchmarks talked about, which got to where they did without having some relationship with their local university, with well-established research chairs. And Mr. Mayor, I've talked about that for three or four years, and that, and that's big money, but that's really where the talent comes from. You can, the whole world's competing for these same three or four percent of the people who make the real intellectual gains that were the, where the real money comes from.
That's correct.
And so I think there's going to be some component here somewhere that talks about where we get that piece. Because I think without that, this other piece becomes a medical complex, not a biological research creating intellectual product complex. And, and I think we've got to figure out, making sure we just aren't filling up spaces with, you know, the, the end of the-
No, they're not docking the boxes. I understand exactly what you're saying. And, and to your, to your point, I mean, right from the beginning, you know, we've had, you know, WMA, Old Dominion, EVMS at the table with us to cover that, that, that point. And they have to be active participants with, you know, the monies that they're looking at from their research foundation and leveraging that. And the only thing that we only, only thing we would say is that, you know, again, we're not looking for this just to be a research hub. We want it to have the opportunity for there to be commercialization as an output that's going on here as well.
Well, all these people today doing research, you know, they're owning and get possession of the intellectual property, what they create, and they're getting to share the royalties.
That's right.
That's what's happening on stuff in Blacksburg.
Exactly.
So that's the marketplace. My point, Mr. Mayor, was I don't think our local universities have the endowment base on their own to bridge the gap and compete for that kind of talent. And I think this is the case where there is a place where the region, this has a much bigger payoff than some other things I, I could mention, but I'll resist. But, but I think we're not going to get that critical mass just relying upon the local university endowment to generate that capital. I just don't think that'll work.
And again, to your point, I mean, I, you know, I'll say it this way, I mean, one of the ways in which this region was able to get someone like a Jerry Nadler, and the mayor knows this very well, with, with an EVMS, was to buy that research. You know, that funding there that you all set aside, it may be utilized-
That's why I'm delighted to see where we've got individuals that will come in and put the buildings up back without us participating, and perhaps our funding go in to that chair.
I'm with, I'm with-
I wonder, I don't know, but I mean, I just want you to know that we're not disconnected on this one.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You know, in some-
Amelia?
If I could just add to John's point, I think we've had discussions with particularly Old Dominion, and they've got a list of researchers they could have had, but for about $5 million apiece. It takes some serious money to bring those people in.
Thank you.
You're talking about Kickstarter.
Yeah.
All right, Amelia, I'm sorry.
Well, along the same line, I was going to ask about the issue of intellectual property because with this research, we need to know it is a win-win for Virginia Beach as well. You have the whole Virginia Park, and along with what John Moss was saying, for the universities involved, the people you bring in, you need to front-load how that intellectual property, who owns it.
Mm-hmm. Well, and that's a very good point, and, and, and as, and, and these are good points for us for feedback because, you know, we, we want to make sure when we outline our, our specializes, our EDIP program, our royalty program, or our loan program, that we reflect some of those comments in, in how we frame that, 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 that program. So, good, good points.
Other questions or comments? On the 155 acres, do you have any idea, have we got that wetlands laying done yet? Are we getting that done? We think we've got all this land.
Yeah.
Then we find out.
To your point.
We might not.
Yeah, we have access to the, the most carrot wetlands, the-
There's wetland development that was done, I was concerned, six months ago.
Okay.
Which we have access to. This conceptual plan probably could be redone with that concept overlaid on top of it.
Okay.
So we would overlay that, and then still, we're going to also make sure we overlay the southeastern.
Very good.
Also, to Ms. Henley's point earlier on, the Princess Anne Commons Task Force for the city set is also working on the guidelines and, and all that as well. They're acutely aware of what we're doing here with the Bio Park, so-
Very good.
That's going to look at as well.
Yes, ma'am.
That component that you just made about the southeastern, because this drawing shows some buildings where the-
No, that, that big green area, that's the cloverleaf.
I know. I mean, I didn't know if y'all discounted the southeastern.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Okay, well, Warren, I tell you, this is our future, and I thank you very much.
You bet.
And we look for it every quarter.
Yeah, absolutely. We want to keep this momentum going.
Progress, moving forward.
That's right.
Yes, sir.
Logo.
Huh?
I love the logo.
They did a great job on that. They really did.
All right, I'll, I'll confess, the manager, that was his wave of innovation. That's his slogan, so.
We thank you so very much. We'll now move to city council comments. Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to thank the council. A couple of weeks ago, I read a letter with some of my thoughts about light rail, and there is no doubt, doubt question or reservation that light rail is becoming more and more dominant in the public domain here. And it's really rising in terms of priority in the city and this council. And recently, I got a copy of a article from a trade journal in Builder Magazine that really, you know, brought some serious question about whether some of the cities like Houston and stuff, or light rail is working effectively. And I think one of the reasons that I am, you know, an, you know, an advocate for a referendum is to facilitate discussion in the public square and to, you know, bring the public to the table and to get a lot of information out there. Prior to my reading the letter, I had the pleasure of meeting with Mr. Wood, and one of the things I brought out was that we should have perhaps a series of, you know, our own workshops on this. And I suggested maybe you invite Aubrey Lane, our Secretary of Transportation, to come down here. And then, Jim, if you don't mind me saying, you also recommended William Harold to come in and things. We have to, you know-
I like the way you said it was a pleasure to meet with me.
Yeah. It was a tough 45 minutes, based on the, you know, the content, and I, you know, but, yeah. But, but once again, I think, you know, but by, you know, building some bridges of communication as we have going forward. And even with, you know, Mr. Moss's resolution for tonight, you know, while I agree with some of it in principle, I think the process, it would be better served if we had a forum to discuss these things out. And there's going to be a lot of information, positive and negative, coming forward over the next year or two. So I'm going to respectfully request that we set up a series of workshops with ourself and civic engagements, and if we can, invite the Secretary of Transportation. Already did it because she asked me to. Okay, thank you. And what I'm thinking is maybe we'll take a full planning session in November. Yep. You know, it's going to be, sit around his, you know, he said he'd be glad to come. He's got to make sure it works on his calendar. And I haven't mentioned anything to Mr. Harold, but I wanted to make sure we got Aubrey here. And I said this was going to be a candid, respectful-type discussion- Yes. -which you communicate to me, and he will be glad to attend. Yeah, I hope you don't mind me mentioning that, Jim, so, who's your-
No, it was fine. I mean, it was your pleasure to meet with me, that makes me feel good.
It was one of the first times ever, Jim, so I'm only kidding.
All right, Barbara?
Well, that kind of has a little bit to do with what I wanted to talk about was this, you know, transportation, because, you know, I think we have to look at a lot of things in a very broad fashion. We've got to look at our overall transportation future, as well as our economic future, and all of it together, which, you know, I think whether we're talking about a referendum on light rail or not, I think it's just what we have to do if we're going to be doing the right thing for planning the future of the city. And it's certainly at a good time when we are adopting the updated comprehensive plan. But this, this report that we got last week on transportation funding, now, I'm sort of back to these modeling studies. We're, we're expecting two fairly soon, the Southeastern Expressway Modeling Report by ODU, and the other one is on the overall master's transportation plan. Is that-
Yeah, there, there'll be a model that has, will have the capability to analyze the master transportation plan, and they're looking at that as well as the southeastern.
Because when we're looking at, you know, what, what was in this packet we got last week, you know, I thought it was really significant at, at just a real quick blush that in none of the regional lists do we see southeastern. I mean, if that's going to be something that we're not going to be planning for the future, then of course we have to know what other roads are going to pick up that planned for traffic capacity. And then we had other roads on the Master Street and Highway Plan, particularly in this area of the ITA, that, you know, have to be built if we're going to open that area up for economic development or whatever. And, and I think it's, in, in making the decisions that we're called, being called on to make now, we really do need this, this overall plan that we kind of all have our, our, our commitment to. I worry about making land use decisions prematurely and maybe foreclosing the opportunity for some things that would need to be done in, in certain right of way, rights of way and so forth. But then in looking at, at this very big list with a very big price tag of roads, you know, when we are, when we are planning that we have, that we're going to have a city that is dependent on single-occupant vehicles for everything, then it's going to call more and more for roads and highways, and there's certainly a pretty big price tag attached to all of these. And I certainly, you know, I couldn't get over glancing at this real quickly last week, and I didn't see a single road on here below Indian River Road. There's nothing for all the rural areas in here. So I, I really, you know, I appreciate this because it takes our current, I guess, CIP and requested but not funded projects and putting them in one place. But as I said last week, it's what's not on here that gives me a lot of questions and concerns too. And I really hope that we've got some, and maybe it's with these, these discussions that we're going to be having, because I think it's really critical that we talk about all these things. I think because we have to talk about it all, we can't just segment one component of it because it all feeds together. But clearly, what we do prioritizing, you know, our road projects and, and even just having them on the plan is, is really important, and I'm, I, I don't think this is, this is, I mean, I know this is a, a- I know this is a first blush of pulling all these projects together and putting them in some categories, but I think we've got a lot of work to do here.
I don't think anyone would argue that point. Other comments? Yes, sir, John?
Picking up on Barbara and Bob's comments, but from a different perspective, the financial health of the people that have to pay for all these things. One of the interesting things, when we went to that state of the region report, and Barbara and Louis and John was there, Shannon was there, if I remember, it was very interesting, is he said that the GDP growth for the area would be 1.14%. We had negative growth last year of 0.14%, so relative to the national average. As we know, a large part of our population is retired, whether it's civil service, military, or social security, 0% change in their pay while their costs are going up. He did talk to anemic and stagnant wages forecasted into the future for Hampton Roads, a very poor employment picture, typical word that he used. What I have here, and I'll share this with the city clerks, is the CBO recent analysis of the country as a whole, and we're projected to underperform that by 1%. It's not a very bright picture, so I hope our five-year forecast will really talk about, in more meaningful terms than we have historically, about the financial stress that our households are under. I can't believe any of you go out in the community anywhere with your church, or Boy Scouts, or whatever, and do not see how struggling people really are. And our city budget has grown when people's incomes have fallen, and we have to address that. I know you say we need more revenue, but the revenue can't come from the people who don't have it. So until we get it, we need to tighten our belt and shift our cost curve on that. My other point was, a couple of.
And if you're, my revenue was not tax.
I think you're talking about rolling revenues.
The biomass, the final thing, and it might require investments, as you just talked about, which I think you'd be a part of.
And happy to be.
And you get a return on that. That's how we got to grow the revenue.
I'd be happy to sit at the table and find things to try to make that happen. The, but the other piece, though, a couple of weeks we were back, and we were talking here about where we were with design to build or fixed price. Maybe call that conversation relative to where we were going with light rail, should we continue down that path. And I said, fixed price, and you can look at any academic, any business journal, any business, fixed price always delivers a better value, more competition than design to build's more expensive. Now, if we were building a nuclear power plant, I might say design to build makes sense. But we're building a very mature technology that other people, when we're out solicited, would build for a fixed price, as you may recall. And now we're taking a strategy that we never had a discussion about, and I remember specifically asking, before we go down this road, come back and let's talk about why design build is the best strategy. I remember that conversation in this room. But lo and behold, on Friday, here comes a memo saying on yesterday and today, we're out soliciting letters of interest for design to build, and we've never had a discussion at this table as to why that acquisition strategy.
We're talking design build with a fixed price, John, not to exceed price. It's consistent with everything we've talked about.
But fixed price brings in a lower value than design to build in almost any case. Look at the literature. Look at the literature. We didn't have that discussion here, and I feel like we were circumvented, at least I felt my request was not honored. I just wanted to share, once again, taking the initiative and ignoring the thoughts made at this table.
John, so, John?
The JT Walk was held, the rescheduled one was held this weekend, and they announced that they had come up with the final additional $1 million to come up to their $5 million that they needed to actually complete the entire park. And construction is well underway and should be completed by next summer.
All right, Barbara?
Going along with John's first comment, John Moss's first comments about the region and the fact that we have, we have not had good growth, a very good presentation was made at the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission last week by Debbie Nguyen, and I wish I had brought that data in, because I've forgotten the name of what it is they're calling this organization. Yeah, pardon? Go Green. Go Green.
Go Virginia.
Go Virginia.
I'll put it in your packet Friday.
Go Virginia. That the, the private industry in this region has recognized the need that they've got to step up and take a leadership role in doing this, and I think that was a real encouraging note. I know they've got a long way to go in what they are going to try to achieve, but I think what it says to all of us is that, you know, we really do have, you know, we have to work together cooperatively as a region to make some things happen, because our state is, what, 48th, and our region, we know, was dead last, and it's with the Department of Defense reductions, we know it's not going to have any great rebound unless we really make the effort. And this bio science is certainly a very good start, but that's the kind of thing we're really going to have to do with these planning sessions we're doing. But I thought it was very interesting that they are already taking that step.
Yes, Shannon?
I think it was Wednesday I spoke to, we, the SWAM Fest, 2000, or SWAM Fest 11th, the 11th annual event, was held at the Sheraton at the Oceanfront. The VAS Cup, all the colleges from the state got together to host this event. There were 250, I think, attendees from across the state. Many of, most of them were visiting here to our fair city, and they had two days' full conferences, great, great turnout, and everyone seemed to be excited about the opportunities to partner and do contracts through SWAM businesses with the universities throughout the state.
Very good. Amelia?
This week, I also spoke at the, on behalf of you, of the Rural Living for Independent and Disabilities, and that conference, they easily had over 300 attend from all around, and were able to share with them that Virginia is for advocates, and share what was going on, especially Barbara Henley's senior resources, which again had their eighth anniversary this past, what date was it, Barbara?
Congratulations.
That was really nice. And then I also got to speak to the firefighters group, which again was very interesting, and the firefighter of the year, what they do. Two other areas, we had, I visited the Human Services New Annex, which is really nice, and quickly talked with our staff about putting a lift, and Deputy City Manager Dave Hanson said, consider it done, which is something they really need, so that's good to hear. And finally, the mayor's African-American Roundtable went really well. We've grown, and this is an initiative through the mayor. And we had easily about 41, and they were able to share with them about, the mayor shared about the light rail, about the arena, about, we had Patty and Taylor share about the SWAM, and then I shared about the African-American Culture Center. And we've gotten some good responses back, that they felt it was a really great meeting. That's it.
Yes, sir, Ben?
I've got two things. One, we, the broadband task force has met again. We're going to be coming forward with council for a presentation on January the 19th, I believe. We are making extremely good progress, and we've got some really exciting things to talk to all of you about. Since we've begun this task force, there's already some incredible things that are beginning to happen in this city.
Great news.
So we look forward to that presentation. Also, last Wednesday convened a meeting of the Beaches and Waterways Commission. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Rosemary Wilson for being there. We had a speaker from the Chesapeake Bay Foundation and a speaker from Omega Protein. It was a very interesting meeting. I believe that once we get back with the Beaches and Waterways Commission, we will be coming forward with a resolution to support Delegate Barry Knight's legislation in the General Assembly. And for those of you who didn't see it last night on Navy TV 10, they did an ex-Hosee on commercial men-hating fishing industry. Part two is tonight, and as a matter of fact, I was contacted by National Geographic. They're going to be doing a documentary this next week and have asked to speak with me also, so stay tuned for that.
Very good. Other comments? Yes, ma'am, Shannon?
I'm the president of the Board of Directors for the All Commerce Association. I just wanted to thank you for being out at the Walk this weekend and welcoming everyone. We had a record year, and thank you for doing that.
You broke a record. Congratulations on that. Good job. And we also honored, uh.
You did?
Mara, that was good.
And we had our kickoff for Cycle for Survival 2016 last night, and.
Oh, great.
Honorable Vin Dadd Port was there, as well as our wonderful city manager, and I think we had about 90 people there. It was, it was very, very exciting.
Were you cycling?
We had a couple of people on cycles, yeah.
Cool.
Yeah, did a demonstration.
Oh, good. That's great.
It was really good.
Have you got a date for that yet?
May 1st. May 1st, 2016.
I just forgot one thing. We did get some good letters from Fairfield and some of the community about that presentation for the group homes. They really appreciated it.
Very good. Okay, we're going to go to the agenda review.
On ordinances number, I, one, Mr. Wood has asked that we defer that for 30 days. He has some.
Yes, sir. I spoke with Deputy City Manager Hanson and Fire Chief and EMS Chief, and there's some contradictory language in there, and I'd just like to see that resolved in 30 days rather than have us correct at the dais, because all sorts of bad things could happen.
So it's not just one A or one A and B?
B also has some stuff.
Okay, both?
All right. How about item two, ordinance to add section 35 dash.
Everybody okay, just sitting there?
Right with that?
Yeah.
I think it's a good call.
All right. On item three, the legislative agenda, and the printed copy that's in the agenda, there's a mistake, says that I am sponsoring item 19, and I can't do that because I have an Oyster lease. So Mr. Wood is the sponsor of item 19.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, if I, just for a moment, we are passing out the new Oyster lease issue. We brought this up as sort of new business last week, and we revised this wording. This is a little different, wasn't your package Friday, but if you adopt this, this will be the language that will move forward.
All right.
All right, and also, Mr. Earn is a sponsor, too. I would like to note that I will be abstaining on that item. Item four.
Okay, wait, on item number three, if I may, that Mr. Moss has said.
Got it, bonded.
Excuse, item number three, legislative agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Medicaid expansion, he'll be voting no on. HR TAC, no on. Voting rights, no on.
Name it. Can you start from the beginning?
My pleasure. Medicaid expansion.
Just give me the number. You know the number.
Give me the number, Bob.
Four.
Number four.
Item four, item four within the table of contents.
Okay.
Four.
HR TAC, what number?
Six.
Six. Voting rights?
Item 12.
Full state funding for Kamala's attorney.
Item 18.
Okay, he'll be voting no, but it will stay on consent.
Yes, thank you.
And it has something to do with the legislative voting rights request. If it's possible, I talked to several council members, and we're looking at taking out the very last sentence. This would include no excuse, early voting, register, and vote on the same day. We have quite a few that are not comfortable with that. We'll leave the rest in.
I'm just trying to look over and see what she's taking out.
We're talking about this slide.
Could you repeat that, Bob?
What number is that?
Number 12.
Number 12.
It's on item page 19.
I could vote with that taken out.
And so you want to take off vote on same day, or register and vote on same day?
The very last sentence.
Okay, register, well, not the whole, okay, the whole sentence?
That says this would include no excuse, early voting.
Okay.
Register, and especially that vote on the same day, if we could leave that.
I'm a yes on 12.
And you want us to pull the one thing?
I said I support pulling up voting separately, yes.
Okay.
Say that again.
Okay, hold on, so.
The one from the police.
Well, he's a yes on, because she's changed, correct. Okay.
But he wants to cut, we're keeping what we just talked about with the no votes on consent. We're going to pull one that he wants to talk about to the public, which is the one the police chief wants us to keep, correct?
Correct. I agree to, I'm always like that.
So the consent agenda will have one through 19.
Vote separately, just not part of the consent agenda, it's both separate or separate.
Well, they won't be in the consent agenda.
Right.
Number 20.
Right.
I was just sending him a tell.
Yes, he will make some comments, and we will vote on that one.
And your amendment was on item 19, is that right, Amelia?
Yes.
Okay.
Just that last sentence.
Number 12.
Number 12.
Page 19.
Page 19.
Thanks, Mayor.
Starting out with a bang.
Okay. All right. Item four, I will be abstaining on that also, because I have some property that's affected by the.
I'll go recommend it's anybody object, okay?
Yeah.
Yes, both. Item five, the light rail, the capital improvement program operating budget establishment mitigation count light rail. Anybody have any comments on that?
Have you got speakers?
Yeah, speakers. Tell them to call in.
Okay, so we'll help pull that because speakers.
Okay. All right. Item six, seven, eight, nine, or 10, anybody have any comments on any of them?
I think nine is probably going to be heard. That would be mine.
Nine.
And six, it will be speakers, too.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
I think you may be right.
And there may be speakers on six.
On item 10, I have outstanding questions. If they're answered before, then I might vote on it, but if not, they're unanswered, I'm voting no.
You're going to vote no?
On 10, I have unanswered questions. Maybe they're answered here, and I'll tell you after I read them.
Okay, just let us, we're keeping that on consent.
Oh, yeah, I was just telling you.
And you'd let us know if you want to vote no, okay?
All right. So, geez. So I got it all straight. How about item six? Anybody, everybody okay with item six?
She just said.
No, there should be some speakers.
They just want to. I'll kind of sign up under public hearing now. Oh, the speakers? Yeah, that's fine.
Item seven, everybody okay? All right. I finally got one.
They're ordering dinner.
I'm going to bait on eight, being okay, too.
Item eight.
Off the hook now.
Okay, anybody, everybody okay? All right. Now, on, item J, there's no action required on that.
Eaters.
That's bullers.
Lots of them.
So why is this here?
It was advertised.
It was advertised.
It was on the agenda last week, and it was approved, but the public hearing was on for tonight, so you have to have it back on again.
So do we need to do anything on it?
Yes, sir.
We should understand.
Okay. K, under planning, ships cap, Ship Cabin Club, Inc., Redhead Realty Corporation, Prince Sam, Ms. Henley.
I think that can be a consent. I haven't heard from any of them.
To PI Telecom Infrastructure, Princess Sam.
I had a question that I forwarded to Carolyn Smith, and maybe she.
Yeah. Barry sent you a response back, but maybe that was about 1:00.
I was concerned about the setback, the side yard setback only being 53 feet, which meets our requirements for being next to residential, but we went through so much heartache over that question with that Crown Castle, because our ordinance, as it deals with towers, requires that there be a setback equal to one and a half times the height of the, is it one and a half? 125% of the total height of the tower. So this is going to put the burden of having to have that distance on the adjoining property owner, and right now, there's not anything there, but I think it's, maybe when I read this, it might answer the question, but I really have some concern about how this, this setback is going to be met.
Well, can we put it on consent, and you pull it off consent if you're not content with the response?
Okay.
Okay, we'll put that on consent temporarily.
All right, just, is somebody going to comment on it?
She's going to let us know if she wants to pull.
Let's see what they, how they explain.
All right, item three, Lerue Tucker and Marjorie Harris, Beach District, Mr. Earn.
No issues with that, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Item four, Walmart Real Estate Business Trust, Hilton Cleveland Associates, Beach, Mr. Earn.
Again, no issues, thank you.
I'll take five for you. Amelia, where are you on that?
Oh, I'm fine.
Okay, I'll be on consent, please.
Clerk, please note that I'm going to be abstaining.
No. And make note that Mr. Wood will be abstaining also.
Item six, CCW Development Associates and Wayne Dupree, Beach District, Mr. Earn.
I spoke with the applicant and the neighbors this morning, and everything's okay, so consent, please.
And I'll be abstaining on that.
Decided on item nine.
Okay, that's it.
All right, and counsel, if I could have your attention for one second. I am supposed to be in Richmond as we speak for a CHEV meeting that's required for me to be able to be there, to stay on the Old Dominion Board, and it's a requirement that I have to be there. I am going to try to stay here until 6:30, and hopefully, we'll get as much of that consent as I can done by 6:30 as we can, but I will be having to cut it out shortly after that. But I just want you to know, it is a requirement that I be there, and there's no other time for me to do it. Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by section 2.2-3711, code of Virginia, as amended for the following